Okay. Okay. We'll call the order of the city council meeting from Monday, March 17th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amanda.
Mark Brener?
Here.
Shannon Derby?
Here.
Doug Brand?
Here.
Tim Petrie?
Here.
Bonnie Schmuller?
Here.
Got second pick?
Here.
Bill Quinn, I was there, and Adam, all right.
Mr. Husky indicated he'd probably be joining us late. Neither of the Leclairs will be able to participate in the meeting tonight.
Then we'll skip over number four and skip over number five. We have a public hearing. On to number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council of something that is on the agenda or perhaps a future agenda item, please step up to the podium. We don't have it in here, but just please stand up. State your name and address for the record. Input from the public. Seeing nothing. We'll go on to number seven, home communications. Letters and other communications from citizens. You want to have anything? Yes, Mark?
I think everyone in council, I received an email from a citizen with a concern about the parking of his home, the amount of excess construction equipment, parking in front of his home, blocking the street. Evidently, he may have issued some solutions with neighbors because his family come in the house every night. We can estimate equipment in front of the house other than pickup trucks. Hopefully, it's solved.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Okay, Shannon?
I also got that email. And then I did speak with a citizen who would like to see better code enforcement and follow through with nuisance properties, garbage being left out on the curb that doesn't need the garbage sticker, those kind of things that haven't been picked up for weeks. They would like to see more follow through, more enforcement with that. They would also like to see more follow through with the building permits being enforced and making sure that people are hiring decent contractors and following through with what they should be doing. And then yard sign placements should not be on the little curway.
Yeah, good reminder.
Thank you. Yep, the terrace and either for lawn care or whatever it may be.
Or political signs, there are some in terraces present.
Yes. And then somebody was upset about the wind and the garbage that gets blown around with recycling. We don't have covered recycling bins, so it gets blown around. So I guess if you see it in your neighborhood, be a kind person and clean it up, even if it's not yours. And then somebody wanted to know more about why we don't participate in Progress Lake Shore.
I guess as quick, at that latter point, the city was one of the founding members of Progress Lake Shore as a public-private partnership for economic development in the community. It was a decision of the city council about four years ago that the benefits didn't justify cost, quite honestly. But that's always subject to reevaluation by the city council. And without going too deep on the code enforcement issues, I can tell you that Chief Minard and myself and our new community service officer have had some discussions and part of, not the whole story, but part of the process is streamlining and standardizing things like what manner of notice is provided to property owners. And we did spend about half an hour with the city attorneys just today talking about this is on things like tall grass, noxious weeds, property maintenance issues, and providing for a uniform method. Sometimes the statutes dictate there's some quirks in there. But I think we're mindful of those concerns. You've certainly heard them as council members that participated in the listening session. But we are looking at that, understanding not to make excuses that we have limited resources. Unlike what's the concerns about the moon blowing garbage in cycle holes, not making excuses, we've had a whole lot of rainy weather this winter and spring. Certain public works or utilities committee look at alternative containers for recyclables. The only ones I've seen in other communities are very large containers for commingled recyclables. If they have toters for trash, they might have pretty big toters for recyclables as well. There's a cost factor there. Honestly, if people are prudent about how they act their recyclables and maybe what conditions they put them out in, a lot of that could be alleviated. An opinion, I know others may differ on that.
That was just reiterated from the meeting itself.
I think, yeah, we as staff as well, we've been trying to pay more attention. I'm sorry, Mark, I guess that referenced the property with apparently some business-related contractor equipment parked on the street and activities. Yeah, the traffic count on that street is probably up because a lot of us staff in council are trying to keep an eye on it.
I do have one more thing. We had a use 911 last week, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Officer Jackson, EMP Tony and and the other responding EMP that did an excellent job caring for my friend who needed their services as well.
Yes, Mark?
I saw all of us got an email from a citizen that didn't like the idea of putting a tent up overnight on the shore of the beach, having people come down. I thought it sucked.
Yep.
Yes.
And the matter that was the subject of that communication is on tonight's agenda.
Anyone else? Okay. On to number eight, council reports from boards, commissioners, and committees. Yes, Mark?
I want to highlight Park of Recreation and specifically our senior center departments. Heather, our supervisor instituted a year-end report here. There's some amazing numbers. Like the trust card delivered 3,900 rides to our community. That's all volunteers driving. The volunteers also generated 13,600 hours. Imagine that, 13,600 hours volunteering for different duties at the citizen center to help your fellow residents. So that's a compliment to Air's organizational efficiency and a compliment to the community who spent that time to dedicate your time to help your neighbors in this community. So I want to thank everybody who did this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Man, I already didn't go by any of this. Well, I have notes, I don't actually win. But I know that Mr. Brockley is gonna, in his report, is gonna touch on a lot of what the finance committee is, but I just wanted to make a comment that I think Bear is a very good company. He quoted us four plus percent for loans, and it turned out to be 3.67%. And the history of, when I look back in the years, the history of them is similar to that, that they quote a price that is unmatchable. And we saved a lot from that. And I won't steal his thunder.
I'm sorry. I got enough.
He's not listening anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Can you give something else?
Yeah, we had library board meeting, and Terry was mentioned. Did she get a proposal? She got a word and wrote about it and wrote an A paper. Yes. And then we also reviewed Jeff's position and decided to keep him on.
Oh, that was a tough decision.
Yeah.
That was a tough call.
Yeah.
So, anyone else? Public Works did meet last week?
Twice.
Twice? Not twice. First time was over at the shop looking at repair items that need to be taken care of. A lot of roof repairs in the future. We also then at a regular public works meeting, we spent a lot of time on sidewalk cleanup. For those people that don't know, there's a state statute that says all snow has to be removed, not just a little bit or some of it, it's all, and that was news to me too. So we talked about that quite a bit. We still have some more talk about it at our next public works meeting early April. And that's it for that. Anyone else? None, then we'll go on to number nine, city council, sorry, city manager's report.
Great. It's up on the screen. For your viewing pleasure, we'll darken the room. If you fall asleep, I'll throw something from up here, so it's very morning. Thanks to our chosen directors for, can't take a bad picture, with all respect to Joe, you can't take a bad picture and show it under any circumstances. In the, under the heading Staffing Updates, within the last two weeks, we welcomed our newest water department employee, full-time employee Gabe Butler. Gabe has worked for the city of Manitowoc and the Department of Public Works for the last three years, has an associate degree in science. Will have to pursue his certification in surface water treatment, but a good addition to the team at the water utility, originally from Mishkot, and he and his wife and kids reside in the town of Two Rivers, so we're happy to welcome Gabe onboard. Parks and Rec, as you know, has been recruiting and interviewing for supervisory or lead position, lead worker for facilities and playgrounds. There is, there has been an offer extended to the top candidate, I think Amanda, our clerk HR director, meeting with that person this week to talk about details of the city benefit package and any other details per position. We are still accepting applications for the city plan or community development director position and also looking at some interim contract services arrangements to pick up some of the burden in that area. City manager recruitment, we'll be addressing that further with a meeting of the Recruitment and Selection Committee. That four-member committee meets at 8 o'clock Thursday of this week. That is over at Senior Center. With, we'll be doing a teleconference with consultants, Kevin Bruner, Republican Administration Associates. He will have the tax ad and information on some of the other materials, including a video that they're in the process of producing for recruitment for the position. We also have openings for lots of Parks and Rec seasonal positions, as has been noted in Facebook posts. You may have seen the graphic that's shown there, everything from a concession stand coordinator to cashiers at the concession stand over at the show to scorekeeper, zumpires, lifeguards, those are not lifeguards at the beach, those are not lifeguards at an outdoor pool. That is for swim instruction, that's why probably why we're looking for swim instructors. That's for swim instruction and any open swims through the cooperative use of the indoor pool at Two Rivers High School by the rec department. Also part host, part maintenance. So feel free to contact the front desk over at the rec department if you're interested in any seasonal positions, providing outstanding service to the community, our guests. We wanted to also highlight on this agenda the fact that we are making use of a number, five presently, and the number is growing, of high school youth apprentices in various city departments. These are some of the folks we have onboard right now. Carlson Kowalski, who was a junior at Mishkot High School. It started last June, tail end of last school year, as a youth apprentice at the water department. He assists the operators in the lab, maintenance, and out in the distribution system, does a great job helping out. Within the last two years, we hired as a full-time employee and the operator who's doing an outstanding job as part of the water utility crew, a young man also from Mishkot High School that had started out as a youth apprentice with the city. So that's good because we need a good farm system to identify candidates from the area. We need, I think, doing a good job getting the word out to some of our area high school students that are, that are good careers to be had in public service, where you can actually apply, you know, STEM skills, science, technology, engineering, and math. And among those are water treatment, wastewater treatment, a whole lot of other areas. At City Hall, our city clerk, human resources director, Amanda Baronbrook, has been assisted since, gosh, last spring?
End of May.
End of May last year by Kiana Livkey. She is a senior at Two Rivers High School. Started, it's right there, started as youth apprentice last May, I just have to question on that, Amanda. And she has been wonderful assist to the city clerk, HR director, in many tasks, including all the preparation for elections, customer service, records maintenance. She's a very positive contributor to the team. Likewise, over at Parks and Rec, there are presently two youth apprentices that are working, supervised by Jared Rohr, our park maintenance supervisor. They're learning more in the industrial equipment area, maintenance area. And those two students who have been featured in posts by the Parks and Rec Department on Facebook are Morgan Hansen and Jayden Wannick. Parks and Rec is looking forward to adding another forestry youth apprentice who will be charged, among other things, with maintaining and updating, keeping current our tree inventory and some of the information that we like to get out to the public on tree programs as well. We're hoping to add a second forestry youth apprenticeship with the environmental grant that was secured through the efforts of Grace Congregational Church, but that one is at the very best on hold right now, given some of the federal funding uncertainties. Fire department is in the process of taking, of doing the screening for a youth apprentice. And Wednesday of this week, this is the position announcement and update came up, they'll be doing oral interviews and physical agility testing for applicants. So we look forward. I know the fire department has had young people working as shadows, some interns through LTC's EMS program. I think this will be the first time though, a formal youth apprenticeship arrangement with Two Rivers High School. So we, we really do value that partnership and look forward to seeing some of our own young people from the community serving in these various positions. Lots of good stuff. I will have a report on the next agenda regarding work that the police department is doing with Big Brothers, Big Sisters as well, with mentoring with, how many young people altogether, Chief? Six presently. And that's, that's a big volunteer commitment and a great connection being made with young people from the community. Bonnie mentioned earlier, the finance and personnel committee really leads the charge when it comes to budget review, also things like recommending to council issues related to borrowing for city capital projects. Just like homeowners, there are some things we, you don't put your groceries, you don't put your groceries on the credit card. Likewise, the city's operating budget is supported from current revenue. Sometimes that's property taxes. Nobody likes them, but the God's honest truth is it takes money to run the city. On the capital side, when it comes to purchasing longer-lived assets, whether it's buildings, building improvements, fire trucks, police cars, and other things, the city does do borrowing, just like people do for their homes. Unlike the debt issued by the federal government, we repay ours, and over 90% of it, maybe they won't repay. Over 90% of the city's current general obligation debt, which is that we're, we're committed to repayment through property taxes primarily or made a property tax pledge, over 90% of that outstanding debt has a 10-year life or less. And that, I think, is a fundamentally conservative aspect of our borrowing often, we're borrowing for street projects. Heck, even a new ladder truck at fire will have more than 20-year useful life, but we try for the most part to keep our debt at no more than 10 years. Baird assisted us, Robert W. Baird assisted us, as they have for any number of years, as financial advisors in taking this year's borrowing to market. We council authorized back in February the marketing of just over $2.5 million for new capital projects that are in the 2025 budget and the refinancing of just shy of $800,000 in existing debt. That was borrowing about four years ago when Lake Michigan levels were very high and our stormwater utility borrowed money, well, both for some stormwater management projects and for erosion control along the lakefront. stormwater management projects and for erosion control along the lakefront and rivers, where a lot of those large stones that made their way from the C1E nuclear plant site, the Two Rivers were placed to protect our shoreline. That was in, that borrowing was a utility borrowing by Stormwater from the State Trust Fund Loan Program, we borrowed a little over $1 million, the outstanding balance on that is $786,000, I think that one was a two-year borrowing. So as they went to market, the goal was to market new debt of just over $2.5 million, and with any lock-in market conditions were favorable, be able to refinance that existing stormwater debt as GO, or general obligation debt, if a rate could be obtained that resulted in interest savings. As was noted, and reported, I think, from last meeting, we did obtain an overall interest rate for that 10-year borrowing at 3.67%. That's well below the pro formas that Baird presented at Council and Finance Committee, where we talked about the borrowing, and it also is well below the maximum rate that council authorized in the parameters resolution that you approved back in February, that authorized up to 4.75%. We were certainly hoping we'd come in well below that, and consistent with Baird's good advice, I'll let go of what Bonnie said, in past years, we saw the rate come in, overall the true interest rate for the project at 3.67%, that's just a smidge above last year's 10-year borrowing, which, as noted there, came in at 3.59%. Now, the actual notes being issued are in, are with coupon rates of 4% and 5%, but it was a considerable premium, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, of $200,000 that was credited, and that got credited against the cost of the refinancing, $68,000 that will be deposited from closing into our debt service fund, so that will help write down some of the debt service costs next year. You remember, it was pretty similar premium applied to debt service this year. So when that all shakes out, the true interest rate over the life of the issue, 3.67%, that, that's a further update on our refining, our financing and refinancing activity. The reason we're meeting here, and thank you again Leicester Public Library for making this meeting space available, is because the normal meeting place on the third floor in the council chambers of the City Hall has been not handicap accessible for a few weeks now. The good news, three weeks into the project, things are on schedule, Schindler Elevator wrapped up their work last week, Borpaul Fire and Safety, didn't notice if they were there today or not, they, they are due in this week to connect the elevator to the fire monitoring system, so, for example, when you hit the alarm bell, it actually goes off, or if fire alarms go off, you can't get on the elevator, say, oh, there's a fire, let's take the elevator, go and do that. So that should be taken care of this week, and once the electrician's work is completed, it's a matter of getting the regional inspector for the elevator system out, the state elevator inspector. So we have every reason to believe, not for mica, that the work session on March 31 and the next regular council meeting will be back at our normal meeting spot. That's about $120,000 project, replacing controls, pumps, motors on the elevator. Remember, we're 32 years now since City Hall was renovated and that new elevator went in. Those of you that have had the experience of its somewhat skittish performance, should find it a lot more reassuring now, reinvesting in capital infrastructure. Again, the spring election, which includes City Council, also includes the Wisconsin Supreme Court race, that has seen slightly more advertising outlets than the City Council election, will be on April 1st, and Amanda, you, as clerk, want to share just the availability of absentee ballots and what happens on Election Day?
Yeah, so in-person absentee voting will start tomorrow at City Hall, the fellow City Hall hours, so seven thirty to five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with the exception of the 28th, we will be looking for ballots again. All last two days, mostly regardless of who will call right on Election Day, and polls will be open from seven thirty on Thursday.
And that's all, this is an additional to our full-time staff, thank you to the election workers that are, yes, they're paid a nominal hourly rate, but also common volunteers from the community that make our elections happen, and they're, wherever they are in the country, are pretty fundamental to our democracy. Winter parking ban is over, the ordinance says it ends on the 15th, so we were okay as of Saturday, the fact is it hasn't been enforced for a couple of weeks now, so you are free to harp on the street for no more than 48 hours of time, assuming it's an illegal spot, and if you have a vehicle parked in your front lawn, kindly get it off back on the street, not that it might not snow in Wisconsin. Two Rivers Public Utilities, the utilities would remind folks that they are offering again this year a scholarship program, applications being accepted, there were two $500 scholarships area graduating high school seniors, you can find an application online on the TRU, TR Utilities website, application deadline April 4, so that's coming up, and of course, to be eligible, the student, their parent or legal guardian must be a customer of Two Rivers Utilities, a lot of you shipping that money somewhere within a 10-year term. Every bit helps, and thank you to the utilities for, again, supporting the youth in our community. You've seen some of these before, but just the slides on ongoing activities, Sophie's is well along in their expansion project, we talked last time about Rush Logistics' new facility, those plans were approved by the Plan Commission, they're meeting last Monday, March 10th, they also need to be reviewed by the BIDC and CDA, which do cite plan reviews for any developments at our city industrial park, those plans will be in front of the BIDC and CDA boards on next week, Tuesday, March 25th, that's a 6,000 square foot new building for a company that currently leases space just outside the city limits in Manitowoc, as somebody on Facebook pointed out, they share a building with ACE Builders right now on our south side of Manitowoc. Also, on the Plan Commission's agenda last week, with review continuing at a special meeting on Wednesday of this week, that's a 5:15 meeting, no, 6:15, 6:15 meeting, they will be revisiting and hopefully able to give final approval to the site and architectural plans for a new building by Growth Garage, Dave Kalista of Growth Garage, they have storage buildings and entrepreneur space over on Lincoln Avenue at an existing facility, one of their tenants is Dark Side Strength Training and Fitness, they've grown to the point where they need a new building, and based on the strength of Dark Side as a tenant for that building, the folks that brought us Growth Garage are proposing a new 2,800 square foot building just up the road at Lincoln Avenue and 33rd. Plan Commission tabled it last Monday, there were some questions about meeting the requirements for off-street parking under the code, we haven't seen the revised plans, got email contact from ACE, who's the design build firm on this, indicating they, they think they have a solution, hopefully without a pass muster from the Plan Commission on Wednesday night. Of course, with the City Council election on Monday, there were five contenders for three seats on the City Council, each for three-year terms, elected at large, there's one more candidate forum to be held, that's tomorrow night, March 18, in the Behringer Room downstairs at Community House, doors open at 6, the forum runs from 6:30 to 8:00. It will be livestreamed, you can connect via the City Hall Facebook page or the City YouTube channel, and just a reminder, you can still go out to the City YouTube channel or get there via City Hall Facebook and view the lead woman voters candidates forum from that on March 6th. Thank you to the lead women voters and the Two Rivers Business Association for offering this opportunity to learn more about the folks that want to serve at City Council or wish to be returned to keep serving at City Council. Locally, the Lake Shore Wedding Expo is coming up over at Sepia Chapel on Sunday, March 23rd. Worth noting, you're trying to marry somebody off in your family, something like that. The Manitowoc County Business Expo will also be held at Sepia, that's on Wednesday, March 26th, with various vendors to talk about, as noted, innovation partnerships, how do we ignite growth, I know that Mayor Nichols and I will be guest bartenders at that event, so I hope you know some of my experience, log it up here. Coffee with a Cop, ongoing community outreach and connection by the Two Rivers Police Department, upcoming Coffee with a Cop sessions this week, Thursday, 9 to 10, at the Two Rivers McDonald's, over to Starbucks, April 16th, and then at the end of April, at the Two Rivers Senior Center, watch for updates on that on the TRP Facebook page and other social media. They cover anywhere in town that offers coffee, local chains, local chains, yes, it is. Through the efforts of Aurora Healthcare and the Two Rivers School System, the Two Rivers 10K Run is coming up, the day before the run is the kids' run, I'm sorry, on Saturday, March 29, I believe there's a bigger run event, yes, the Two Rivers 10 Mile on the next slide, on Sunday, the 30th, so, both of us, a kids' event on Saturday afternoon, March 29, and then a 10-mile run on the 30th, for information there. Pork and Canvas coming up in the Community House at the Behringer Room, after a couple glasses of wine, the beer just looks better all the time. And Two Rivers Rotary, which every year is involved in support of some impactful community project, largely driven, this year, in support of the area Domestic Violence Center Shelter Encourage, there have been various municipal projects in Two Rivers actively supported by Rotary, the annual dinner and auction is at Sepia Chapel, Saturday, April 5 p.m., tickets available in advance through Rotary's Facebook page or any Rotary Club member, and I'm told sales are going very well, likewise donations for their, for their silent auction and oral auction, which are always a highlight, pretty good food too. The Two Rivers Optimists, doing great things and serving the youth of the community, are organizing an in-remembrance night where folks can purchase luminaries to be placed at the gravesite of your loved one in the Two Rivers Cemetery, that is on April 12th, and a special welcome and remember it speech will kick off the event at, oh, the old cemetery, Pioneer Rest in Calvary, and the new cemetery, Holy Cross Forest View, cost is $10 per luminary, this information there on ordering them, and orders are due by April 8th, so support a good cause and light a luminary for your loved one. I, this is a blank slide, but I do want to touch on several items that I have under legislative intergovernmental update, I'm sorry I didn't have time to do accompanying slides, there's some important stuff here. First of all, in your packets is a letter that was received via email last Monday morning from the state of Wisconsin Department of Administration, they were announcing to Two Rivers and any other city that has a housing revolving loan fund funded through small cities' community development block grants over the years, that the state is planning to discontinue those funds, and I'll say, take the money back to the mothership in Madison. We, as a city, have had a local housing revolving loan fund funded with program income from housing, past housing grants that were loaned to folks in the community and have been repaid, we've got a portfolio of a little over $2 million in grants, program income varies from year to year, there, I think all of them now are zero interest, fully deferred loans, they don't have to be repaid as long as the original applicant owns and lives in the home, if somebody passes away or sells, sells their home, then the loans need to be repaid and the money, the money is recirculated in the community, I think as a city, we've been pretty good stewards of that money. You'll see that the state has some concerns about the amount of funding being held in these funds at the local level, the amount of cash or idle funds, I would say, which they note has grown statewide to over $22 million in the 215 local revolving funds. There are upcoming opportunities to learn more about the process that's being used to our in-person meetings in Madison and Wasop, the other is a virtual session, and that's the end of April. All I can say at this point is I reached out to MSA Professional Services, who for over 15 years has been the contract administrator of the city's program, reached out to our neighbors in Manitowoc, that actually they also use MSA, they also have a housing revolving fund, and to the, also reached out to the regional housing loan program up in Green Bay at Brown County Planning. This letter, I was told in each case, kind of caught them by surprise, they were aware that the state had been discussing this possibility, had not heard anything this definite, you can see the state is proposing to redeploy those dollars to help fund a new initiative for converting, looking for it here, converting vacant buildings to affordable housing, we know there's a housing crunch in the state, I'll just offer a bit of opinion, it's kind of frustrating, the state with a $4 billion surplus has to fund a program initiative by taking funds away from local communities that have been reusing that money, we'll learn more about it, I guess, and be back in touch. Ultimately, the state does control that money, it's federal money originally from HUD. I find it interesting, you know, since 2015, I believe, cities, small cities like Two Rivers have not been able to apply for new housing, CDVG housing grants, the money has been allocated regionally to the regional funds, like the one out of Brown County that serves our area, and they have been, that regional fund has been able to help people in Two Rivers with loans when we don't have the money in our fund, which is good. I guess I'd feel a little more comfortable if that money was being redeployed to the regional housing fund, because you'd assume if, if we can't do loans, we didn't, I don't, I looked it up, maybe $150,000 last year in loans, if we can do them, and those are all referred to the regional fund, it's clearly going to require more resources there, so that's, that's the latest on this, but all I can say is stay tuned. We went through a sort of similar process a few years ago, when the state wanted to pull back the money that had been made available to small cities for economic development loans, and the state actually found some provisions that if you were branded that money before a certain magic date, I'm sorry, back in the 80s, that money could be de-federalized by the state, and that's why we still have Fund 290, our economic development fund, with about $1.2 million in it, that can be used for local economic development included loans. I don't know if there's that option here, and I guess I observed that it was concerned about too much money sitting in local housing funds that aren't turning the money over with new loans, you could take that back, as opposed to all of it, so stay tuned, and this may be something at a point in time, not too far down the road, we want to talk with our legislators about. That is that bit of intergovernmental update. Status of our Safe Drinking Water Fund and Clean Water Fund financing for 2025, where, Matt, could you share, Matt Heckinlibel, especially on the Safe Drinking Water Fund, has had some discussion with state-level folks about where, where they believe we stand, again, remember, the big deal here is bipartisan infrastructure law dollars that flow to the state to underwrite those low interest rates we get and to fund the principal forgives.
So, the, we have two major projects this year that will be utilizing state DNR funds, primarily the Harbor MS 16 Road Reconstruction Project, and then the Eastside LSL Project, both will be using Clean Water and Safe Drinking Water Funds, and the Standard Lateral Project specifically will be using Safe Drinking LSL dollars. The DNR has identified back late last year that the city is eligible for funds on both the Safe Drinking and Clean Water Funds, which will deal with the sanitary sewer and water veins, but they still have not finally But they still have not finalized the eligibility list of the scattered lateral funding list. So, I sent out a request for information to the DNR as to what the status was. Long story short there is they're waiting for some projects to close out, so they know how much carryover dollars they have. But they identified that since Two Rivers scored real well, we don't have to worry about not getting funding for the LSL program. And that will basically be 100% funded on the private side with principal forgiveness. So, they said, basically, go ahead and did those projects.
Bottom line of a good news report, and we, we're supposed to have enough money there to do about 200 scattered site.
150.
One, sorry, 150 under a new contract. So, that, that all pans out, that means the city would be able to sustain the $2,500 for household support, funding support. And I think on the, on the mains, we qualified for 20% principal forgiveness. So, that, that's not chicken feed either. And we, we'll wait and see what the status is going forward of the lead-in copper mandate. That has been under challenge by American Water Works, and I don't know. I'm sarcastic, I don't know if Elon Musk has looked at that one yet or not. But clearly, lead-in copper, although it's been a priority nationwide, it's a big bill. We, at the local level, that's part of the AWWA's challenge to the law is, without federal funding, it's an enormous burden, especially to older communities that have a lot of lateral. So, we gotta, it ain't enough just to mandate it, that it's a huge resource to them. So, and for the near term, good news, that means we will be proceeding to bid out that scattered site project and for the state, excuse me, Sustainable Shoreline Project. I was hoping to have an update on the planning dollars for that. Again, we have $60,000 in hand from the Fund for Lake Michigan, that's not federal money. The dollars through the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Seaways Cities Initiative are on hold. About 130,000 for that project due to the federal funding conundrum. And I'm still trying to get a final answer on what the funding source is for the biggest single chunk of money for this planning effort, which is through the national, yes, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. One clarification on that. So, while council in January authorized signing the consulting services contract, we've held off on that pending. Better explanation of where we stand. For the most part, on these, these projects, you spend the money and then are reimbursed, and you just want to make darn sure the money's there. Again, that's every, that's to take a real deep dive, no pun intended, from the south edge of the harbor all the way to the city limits on future planning, shoreline. Some modeling as to what might be done to reduce the silting and sedimentation at the opening of the harbor, some really big picture stuff that could be very beneficial to Two Rivers. It's a heck of a lot of work gone into it to just see it at a standstill right now. Item four, just something to throw out there. For years, municipalities have, have said, you know, anytime there's a federal tax bill, watch out, you know, federal tax exempt financing for local infrastructure projects, like we talked about earlier, is hugely important. We, Brian Delman and I have heard about it from the APPA, Public, American Public Power Association legislative rally. I've got to say, my first response on that was, yeah, sure, and they might repeal a lot of gravity, too. Oh, my goodness, you know, tax exempt financing, which gets municipalities, states, villages, interest rates that are a good 2% lower than what taxable rates would be, has been fundamental to reinvesting in our infrastructure. The only message here is, it's again, something we understand is on the table, as many things are on the table, in fashioning a way to pay for continuing past tax cuts that are coming to an end otherwise. So, be vigilant on that, and if we see any move, any more public movement on that, we may be back to council requesting a resolution on that. It was just a few years ago, the feds took away the tax exemption for advanced refunding bonds, which cities and other public entities used when they basically said, my goodness, this is really low rates right now, we have an outstanding issue that doesn't come due for another year or two. We want to borrow the money now, set it aside. That used to be tax exempt borrowing, and that's no longer an option on advanced refunding bond. Pretty sure I can talk to them there today. We've used those in the past when we were doing a lot of refinancing to take advantage of lower rates. So, I think it's pretty clear, everything's on the table, best watch on that whole issue. It's not even for infrastructure, it's the cost of borrowing, a lot, 2% above what it would otherwise be. The other thing, there's some, some information, I think, in your packets. I should know, yes. From WPPI, this was from a report by Mike Peters, the CEO of WPPI Energy, our energy supplier. There's work out there, it's been talked about for years, to reinforce the nation's electrical grid, the transmission facilities that, that carry power regionally around the Midwest through MISO, our Midwest system operator, and elsewhere in the country. And one of the battles that's going on in Wisconsin right now is over a so-called right of first refusal provision that's contained in legislation that didn't make it all the way through the last session of the legislature and is up again for consideration in this session. And that would basically give existing operators, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, existing operators of transmission facilities in Wisconsin, like MISO, ATC, American Transmission, first dibs on projects that involve investing further in that infrastructure. There is, that legislation, which some have touted as anti-competitive and could cause prices to be higher, actually is advocated by various public power entities and investor-owned utilities in the state. I understand that Senator Lemahue and Representative Tittle, our representatives, are in favor of the legislation. And it looks like there is a majority in state, talking to WPPI's legislative people, there is a working majority in the state senate for this one. There's some question at the assembly about whether they can garner the majority. Bonnie had asked Brian about this, too, I should point out, had picked up on it and read some of the materials that council has access to. So, we're going to track this one. Again, it looks like both of our legislators are on the same side as our power supplier and a lot of the industry. There are some big national entities, I understand, Americans for Prosperity, the Koch Brothers, some other folks that are not in support of this legislation. And I'm sure there are parallels in other states. It's kind of interesting because it's not really a partisan divide. Both houses of our legislature are Republican-controlled. There are some strong Republican leaders in support, but it's, it's some big money interests duking it out in the legislature, and it'll all trickle down to what, for us, local, is my present explanation right now. So, that's it for a fairly lengthy legislative intergovernmental update, and that wraps up my report. Thank you.
On to the 10th agenda. Under A, we have Presentation of Minutes from the City Council Listening Session from February 19, 2025. Recommended action will be a motion to waive reading of the minutes. Under B, we have Minutes of Meetings. We have a committee on aging from February 4th and March 3rd, 2025. The Library Board from February 11, 2025. Environmental Advisory Board from February 18, 2025. Public Utilities Committee from March 3, 2025. Public Works Committee Special Meeting from March 5, 2025. And the Public Works Committee from March 5, 2025. Recommended action, there will be a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have Department Reports for the month of, March, trying to go much, sorry, March 2025. We have City Clerk, Electric, Inspections, Library, Parks and Recreation, Public Works and Water, recommended action, will be a motion to receive and file. Under D, we have Applications and petitions. We have one of those, application for temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for Artorama on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and May 8th, 9th, and 10th, 2025. From 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 1710 West Parks Street. Recommended action will be a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of license. And under E, we have summary of verified bills for the month of February 2025 for $5,255,688.51. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. The recommended action for the consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion. So, Bonnie's can go first.
Second.
And then go second. Any council discussion?
I find this kind of interesting, I don't know if you want to correct it or not, but on page 28 of the packet, in the, under D, during the, they, Public Works tour of the facility. And they, I don't know where this is, but they saw some overhead garage door that Doug Grant had inquired whether they were insulted at the time's inspection. It appears that they are. So, I don't know what you want to correct, or solve, or something.
Insulated? Insulated. I think there's an A missing there. So, for the record, neither the doors nor the committee members were insulted.
You did not insult the door today.
I tried not.
Okay.
We're doing it. We weren't, yeah, it was chilly that day.
Okay, with the exception of, you guys. Anything else? Yes, Mark.
Mr. President, I think in interest of the councilor and being completely honest and responsible committee, I noticed that included in the packet is the Community Listening Center, Court, and we have the individual questions that were presented. As I go through many of this information we're dealing with, these questions are being answered by the committee people who are either listening. And I think what we should do maybe is try to gather together and put the answers, or at least updates on the questions, so that we can efficiently answer their issues and respond to them after questions.
You were having an update at the work session.
At the work session, yeah. March 31st, two weeks out.
So, yes, I can pull that up.
I know you've gotten some individualized responses, Police Chief, you guys were very prompt on PB issues. Hopefully, we can refer to what you've already seen, and if there's some gaps to be filled, yeah, two weeks.
Anything else? See, anyone else, this will be a voice vote, so all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Very. On to 11, City Council Formal Items. We are going to go stick down to D, because Mike is joining us via phone tonight. So, Authorization for Overnight Camping in Neshota Beach for New Parks and Recreation Department Organized Event, called the Great Neshota Beach Campout for One Night, August 30th through 31st, 2025.
Mike, are you back with us? If you are, you're muted. Mike?
Yeah, this is Mike, but like, something's back on.
There you are.
Very good. Hold on, I'm gonna turn you up a bit. The floor is yours on introducing the Great Neshota Beach Campout Request. And Luke, use your outdoor voice, please.
Yeah, we are excited to camp out on the beach on August 30th if possible. Parks and Rec's gonna run the whole thing and make sure, make sure we take care of the beach and everybody will be registered to it. And we'll have, the other thing I didn't mention in my memo is we're gonna mark the campsite on the beach and then put a tag on all the tents as well. So, we'll know who's in each tent, and you'll have to have a tag of, if you're camping with us. So, we're, hopefully take care of everything we can to keep everybody ready to be for the night. Lots of participation from other community organizations. The Boy Scout, Scout Troop is gonna help with cleanup and making and helping carry people up to their tents. Rotary's gonna help all of you. The Optimist Club is gonna be cooking breakfast. Washington House is gonna be ice cream. Probably some, it's all been from the CRBA as well. So, it's exciting to bring a lot of really good people together, do something that's absolutely one of a kind, and hopefully make a lot of Two Rivers families happy and do something special. So, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. My memo has lots of good details. Again, please feel free to shoot me any questions.
Any questions for him?
Do note there are letters of support from a lot of the participating organizations. Just, just to supplement Mike's comments, they don't really need it, but, you know, Labor Day weekend has been left with a big void in the community with the end of Kites Over Lake Michigan. This is primarily focused on our local residents enjoying, coming out and enjoying the beach. It is organized by the Parks and Rec Department as Parks and Rec Department Initiative. So, in terms of this, a concern that was raised, which you ought to take into consideration, it's setting a precedent, well, A, it doesn't have to set a precedent, and B, I applaud it as a programmatic initiative by the Rec Department, partnering with a lot of community groups. And I had some questions when I first heard about it, but again, it is one evening, Saturday overnight to Sunday. They have to check in starting at 6:00 p.m., lights out at 11:00 p.m., checkout on Sunday at 10:00. So, it shouldn't have a negative impact on the ability of people from Two Rivers or wherever to go out to the beach and enjoy it on Saturday or Sunday or any other time that weekend. I believe the ordinance allows for either the city manager or the city council to waive park hours. This is a major new event, and especially since it was some outreach directly to the city council, we thought it was appropriate to get it in front of you ASAP, so the people that are working on it, hopefully know they can move ahead.
Yeah, I did have a chance to speak with Mike when I was at the senior center before our workout class, and he explained it all to me in great detail. And I think it's a great opportunity for our community to connect with our beach, to connect with nature, and a family-oriented event. And every event that we've had, Parks and Rec has done an amazing job of cleaning up and organizing and taking care of everything. So, I just expect this to be another one of their great events.
Anyone else from it? I do have a question for you, Mike. How much of the beach does it take up, are you planning?
Yeah, I would say a good chunk, hopefully the space in front of the harbor each civilian would be where it's taking up. I would expect hopefully 50 to 75 families participating. And so, I think we'll be on a good chunk of the Neshota Beach operating front of Rotary. I'm hesitant, it's the first time, kind of figuring out spacing, something to take place with. I think there'll be plenty of space if other people want to spread out across the beach if they're not a part of the event.
Awesome.
Not camping, but doing other things.
Sure, yep, gotcha. Yeah, no, I agree with Shannon, I think it's great, great event. So, we're looking just mainly to waive the normal park closing hours for participants in a special event for Section 7-1, that's six of city ordinances, correct?
Correct.
So, proceed and motion to do that. Thank you, Mark.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President. A safe, fun-filled, family event, I support it.
Thank you. Second by Shannon. Any council discussion? Yes, Bonnie?
Yeah, I, I actually do have a concern about setting, setting precedents. Can't be done, can't, or I, I think Mike does a good job. I don't want anybody to think differently, but I'm gonna be voting no, just because, I don't know. I know you can say no to other people, and just don't know how far you can get with that before somebody comes who says, well, you know, you do it in addition to that one. I mean, I, I hope it doesn't happen, but.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll do a roll of the matter.
Action list?
No.
That's that number?
Aye.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Jenna Derby?
Aye.
Doug Grant?
Aye.
And Peter?
Aye.
Thank you all for that. Mike, while you're still there, we're gonna go to E. Ordinance amending Section 6-4-9 of city ordinances entitled vendors from special vehicles.
You worked on this one? Yeah, this one was brought to my attention that several council members had heard comments that uh about that that they're a good thing and a great amenity to have. But we wanted to make uh we had to make sure it's office, so why the base could be and the parking for them a little bit uh more robust in terms of how we managed to that to make sure you get a little more talent on it. Uh, but also trying to keep it very feasible for our most top vendors to have access to the beach. So a lot of detail in that. I don't want to have to, I don't want to write through it for you, but if you have questions, please ask. Greg knows this very well also.
I I would just say, in the last time we gave you a a red line of the existing ordinance, the only thing changed in the draft that is in front of you is I did drop language that I had added last time about um sorry, about the Parks and Rec Director issuing uh at least free permits. It would simply, it simply states now at the bottom, excuse me, at the top of the second page that uh, and this is in the ready for adoption version of the ordinance, that the Park and Rec Director may limit the number of seasonal permits. I think it's good to have the ability to say, oh, my goodness, we've got too many for the space allotted. Uh, this would be that uh when or if to cap the number at the discretion of the person we hired to run our parks. And our city attorney on Friday, so this uh, and I only sent it to him on Friday, fairness, sent him the final version of this, did have one correction that would happen in two places. And that is under, on the first page of the ordinance amendment, under section two, sub E limitations. First paragraph, except as expressly provided herein, no product that would be changed to no goods. It's synonymous, but the term goods is used earlier in the ordinance when we define what a vendor is. A vendor sells goods, doesn't talk about product. And similarly substituting out uh the word goods instead of product right at the very beginning of the second paragraph under section two sub. Would recommend approval of that, of the ordinance amendment as presented with that minor limitation. Again, this this would establish for those seasonal permits, a two hundred fifty dollar annual fee, not prorated. Covers the period from the week prior to Labor Day through the week following Labor Day. And it does allow for vendors to be allowed in for special events by action of the Parks and Rec Director or City Council. Uh, it also does establish if you want to be near the beach or in the Shota Park that uh vendors could park at the Walshfield parking lot without a season permit, um, provided they park in the same manner designated for other motor vehicles. Again, it would be up to Parks and Rec to designate where those spaces are. I'm sorry, did I say after?
After Labor Day.
Oh, I always do that. That's the short.
So that's like a really, really good issue to solve.
I'm sorry. I always mix those two holidays up. The week before, a week before Memorial Day through a week following.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
As I understand it, like the uh beach and parking lot one is gonna have a painted off area where they can park, be limited in space, and it'll be up to the vendor, first come, first served, or you can't exceed the space. But the vendors will have to get there early if they want to ensure the spot's available. They'll have to pull their license on their food truck, right?
Did you hear that, Mike?
No, I didn't hear that.
Right, is that right?
That's correct. I'm looking for it here, but uh.
Mark had asked about the parking at lot number one, if it will be painted off for the number of food trucks and that they'll have to make sure they show off their permits. First come, first served.
We'll paint off, we'll paint off the section of the parking lot and then uh Parks and Rec's gonna print, laminate uh permits that they have to show, so they can see that.
Yep, that's so. That appears at the bottom of page one. Permit must be displayed at all times. And then the top of page two, second sentence. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, second paragraph on page two. Designated vending area lot one should be available on a first come, first served basis permit hold. It's covered.
Yeah, this question.
Um, any of the food trucks are trailers, Mike? Um, do they account for parking of the truck in addition to the trailer then, or how will that work?
Well, we only have, there's only so much space, so I hope I'm just gonna have to be a little bit of getting along between the vendors. Uh, so if they're pulling a trailer, I think to drop the trailer, hook their truck, they can go park the truck like a normal vehicle. Uh, there is gonna be two to three uh spaces there for a truck. So that is gonna be up to them to utilize the space that they can. This is not something we really want to get if it's on and ask out there uh on a regular basis to try to direct them out exactly out of park. Uh, but yeah, if they have a trailer, they could actually only go park the car as normally.
Any other questions for Mike? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Thank you. Do we have a second by Mark? Any council discussion? See none, we'll do a roll couple of Amanda.
Scott Stenman, sir?
Aye.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Doug Grant?
Aye.
And Peter?
Aye.
Bonnie Chumalunis?
Aye.
Want to carry?
Thank you all for that. Thank you, Mike. Um.
All right, thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mike.
Uh, back to A, uh, resolution to adopt the Manitowoc County Hazard Mitigation Plan for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-two.
You have a copy of the complete hazard mitigation plan in your packets. It will be a quiz immediately following the meeting. This is, this plan is periodically updated, and if there are questions, I think between uh Phil Manis and Chief Minor, they would be able to uh give you a bit of an overview. Phil, I know you've you've been working in this sector for a long time, and so you have a sixty-second or less elevator speech on the county hazard mitigation plan?
Anyway, they look at all of the risks that may affect Manitowoc County anyways, from tornadoes to diseases, and then they rank them in order, and then they come up with plans that can mitigate those, so we look into the future to protect Manitowoc County.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Did you really all there?
I read through it.
You too. It was a good reading.
It was interesting.
It was interesting. It is kind of interesting when you think about it and relax.
Every man's elevator speech gets you to like the third floor of mine takes Empire State Building, saying, all right, Brian.
Yes. Yeah, Mark.
I have two questions. Number one, I I was surprised. It's reassuring to see that they have so much money for any kind of disaster. But I was surprised, I know they have a plan for the unlikely occurrence, never happened, but there's plan for nuclear power. They didn't have that in common. They wasn't going to transfer that and made it happen. So they came around and recommended the same shelter type of steps.
Did you say comment on it in the?
So there's a separate plant, personal for the indoor plants, and it's practiced annually. Uh, and it's covered by FEMA, so it could have been placed as an addendum. Um, Point Beach is still in Manitowoc County, but Tulani now was shut down and that still has some hazard that's out there, so that it does enjoy Manitowoc County.
My second question is, I read the whole thing too, pretty good. Lots of graphs and charts with details of uh, you know, essential poverty and spread out population. But how does the regular community have access or become informed about this overall plan? What what do you think to share this with the community?
You know, that's a great question. I know that the county has a local emergency planning committee, and one of their jobs is communications. How this plan is communicated to everybody is that it's public document. Pretty much all that I can tell you. I could try to get a follow-up to that and either have my super chief correct, send you information or present it at the next council meeting.
Is posted on the website somewhere where somebody's watching, can go to it and read it, view it?
And that I would have to check also the county website. It would probably be in the emergency management.
Can we confirm that? Other than something? It is interesting. It's good to see that we think about all these problems and that's great that we have the research.
Looks like ManitowocCounty.gov gets out there.
So if anybody's watching, you know that and read it?
It's to be.
Did they also find it on the addendum minutes for tonight?
Now, the one that's posted is from two thousand fourteen.
So what is it?
Then once this makes the rounds, it would appear up there. Yep. So I I anticipate it would be back out there on the county's website. Also on Bay Lake Regional Planning's website, and I see they were, they were integral in, they pulled this together, coordinated. It's pretty fast, and this is just, isn't it reassuring as a resident to know that this behind the scenes planning is taking place?
Hi, Bonnie. And the biggest reason to vote for it is because it helps get your funding faster. Does it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Better for grants.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to waive reading and adopt the county hazard mitigation plan.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shannon. Second by Mark. Any council discussion? See none, we'll do a roll couple of Amanda.
Doug Grant?
Aye.
And Peter?
Aye.
Bonnie Chumalunis?
Aye.
Scott Stenman, sir?
Aye.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Thank you all for that. Uh, onto B, ordinance to amend section five dash six dash twenty-four of the municipal code regular regulating commercial refuse recycled haulers.
I'll refer to our Public Works Director on this because he and the Public Works Committee have been spending a lot of time.
Ah. Um, this one started with a contractor questioning why the city only would allow barricades in front of roll-off dumpsters and things, uh, primarily dumpsters within the public right-of-way. Uh, despite the ordinance stating that dumpsters with reflective tape would also be allowed if that reflective tape was approved by the director myself. Um, through discussions with other staff members, um, that had never occurred. So ultimately, we started the whole discussion process and uh primarily came up with uh regulations or requirements for tape on the dumpsters. And then that expanded to allowing uh pylons uh to be placed as well. And those requirements are also identified with the municipal ordinance language revision. So what you have in front of you is actually two versions of the ordinance. One is a markup version, uh, and the second is a final draft. So that's the short version.
I didn't even know that conspicuous was a word. That's the degree of conspicuousness? Thank you.
Any questions from that? Like Matt said, it was talked in Public Works, but go ahead, Bonnie.
Well, I was just wondering, um, when you talked about the dumpster, why did you go from six inches wide to two inches? I'm sorry that I don't remember. Is that okay to him?
That's actually what the uh local uh refuse hauler had already on his dumpsters.
What do you mean, the six inch?
The six inch, but no, they had two inch. So rather than uh the two inch is actually easier to place on the dumpsters. A lot of the rails and pipe pieces are only about two to three inches wide. So a six inch uh piece of tape would actually overlap and deform them. Uh, and we actually then required more length and whatnot than what the uh uh local provider was actually having on his dumpsters. So uh overall, we're getting more reflectivity than with the two inch tape and a longer piece than the six inch and shorter.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to waive reading and adopt your. Thank you. Second by Bonnie. Any council discussion? Okay. See none, we'll do another roll of Amanda.
Doug Grant?
Aye.
And Peter?
Aye.
Bonnie Chumalunis?
Aye.
Scott Stenman, sir?
Aye.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
On to her.
Thank you all for that. Onto C, ordinance to amend section four dash one dash four of the municipal code regulating construction and repair of sidewalks within the city.
I'll take this one as well. Um, we brought this forward in November last year um to address some concerns relating to uh vegetation on the sidewalks or overcovering uh extending into the sidewalks, uh, grass, uh, brush, trees, et cetera. Uh, that was the primary intent of that ordinance. Uh, what was drafted uh also included other references to other sections of the municipal code that would involve sidewalk clearing. Um, and then uh trees as far as vertical height and things of that nature. What we ultimately ended up doing was I, it was ultimately tabled, requested to be looked at, revised, et cetera. So uh in doing so, I was determined to strike the originally November proposed section that made cross-references to other municipal code that would include the uh clearance sidewalks of snow and ice in section four one six. And also the uh clearance of objects over and above the sidewalk referenced in section seven dash four dash nine point three. Ultimately, in doing this review, uh, in November, I also made reference to a policy guide, user's guide. Uh, that is actually included in the council packet. Uh, you can see the proposed revisions is there. I'll touch on that in a little bit. Uh, but also ultimately, in doing the revisions to the policy manual, guidance manual, uh, it was noted that presently on sidewalk concrete repairs, uh, if the vertical height difference where our ordinance originally read was three quarters of an inch, the sidewalks uh panel keg uh needs to be replaced. The federal register or the federal government has changed those standards down to a quarter inch. Uh, now, the concrete sidewalk panel does not need to be removed at a quarter inch. It could be, however, other means and methods could be utilized such as grinding the edges, uh, potentially muddjacking and things of that nature. So trying to look at other cost, more cost-effective uh alternatives for repairs. Those are all kind of spelled out in this user's guide policy manual. Uh, also in there is noting that if there was damage caused by a city uh street terrorist crew, the concrete sidewalk portions that were uh damaged or offset will the cost to repair or fix that damage would now be defined as a city expense. So that pretty much wraps up the proposed provisions and uh.
Questions?
I'd just like to compliment Matt, his staff, and the committee. This came to the council as an ordinance amendment originally. I think notably Councilor Moe Hasky was not able to be here tonight, pointed out, you know, this does. There are several different areas of the code that's impacts on it can be pretty confusing to the average citizen. Say, what am I supposed to do? It's here, it's there. Uh, putting it all into an up-to-date guide, a how-to piece. There may be room for some of these in other areas of our ordinances. Yeah, because it's more than just a two paragraph answer to an FAQ, but this this should be a valuable. But this this should be valuable for people who really care about sidewalks. And understand too, because we've had some recent issues on this. Uh, you can't plant a tree, you're not supposed to plant a tree within the public right of way. And most likely to plant it in the so called terrace between sidewalk and the curb without a permit from the city forester, contact parks and rec departments for that. And you're not supposed to remove a tree from the right of way where the city has the right right to maintain the trees uh, without a permit. Probably the most frequent reason for citizens wanting trees out is, it heaved my sidewalk. I fixed it six years ago, it heaved it again. Well, sometimes the inspection might show the, because of its condition, removal of the tree is warranted. Other times, it's just, and sometimes it wasn't the right tree, right species for the spot. But do you, you know, do you take down a twelve inch diameter tree because gee, it should have been another variety? Or is it worth small and criminal cost to the sidewalk program? So this is meant to address that in a cooperative way and not have everybody or not have so many people that are out to get rid of those iron trees for that sole reason.
Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, what's trap more? Red danger sidewalk?
Uh, in some areas, uh, older neighborhood businesses, uh, basically it would be a door down to, uh, the basement. So
From the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk, uh, for, uh, stores, they would have a product down to the basements or deliveries and things of that nature.
Director, send me the screen.
Yes.
I'm not sure if we have any in two rivers enough, but they're they're not uncommon in older business areas.
There used to be one on twenty fourth and Allen's.
Ah.
There used to be one on like twenty fourth and Allen's.
Like T N R?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those guineas.
Yeah.
We're one of those guys, the Frank Wackle. I don't have any.
You?
Yeah. No.
Still heavy though.
But in Maine, we had sidewalks and we had
Oh, Maine, I thought you were talking about walking gear.
No. I tried, but it didn't make it.
No, you don't follow my thought.
No areas that I'm aware of, but, uh, some sort of reinforcement is sometimes required.
Any other questions, Bonnie?
Well, I'm trying to wrap my head around the width of the sidewalk being five feet, more than five feet.
Five feet, four inches. I don't know why that dimension was ever picked, but that was
But I don't
a common dimension.
I don't think the sidewalk's been so long.
Uh, they vary actually from about forty-two inches up to something greater than five foot four.
You mean from here to here, not from, not from where the cups are?
The width, correct.
That's just an, I mean, that's a lot of sidewalk.
The minimum for ABA standard?
Uh, minimum is forty-two, forty-two. With occasional bump ups or passing and whatnot. Which would be a driveway, uh, carriageway walk. Shannon, you have a question?
Oh, no, I just, um, I read through it earlier and it, um, I'm glad it's, the language is getting cleaned up.
Any other questions from Matt? Otherwise, we'll look for motion to waive reading a document.
I'll make that motion.
Shannon, second by Tim. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Amanda.
Dan Petrie.
Aye.
Bobby Shumulus.
Aye.
Scott Sekman sir.
Aye.
Adam Humpy.
I didn't read it over, but I'm going to abstain just because I didn't hear what the rest of the council was talking about if there is any concerns or concerns from the public that I would want to hear.
Um, Mark Britner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all for that. Uh, we already did D, that had been passed and went through, and along with E, that was passed and went through. Uh, unto F, appointment of Jack Wallace to a three year term on the Lester Library Board, sorry, May first, twenty twenty-eight.
Uh, David Pennyfeather, the outgoing board member, has served two consecutive terms, so he's free. Thank you. As so he is at his term limit there, I think most of you know, Wallace formerly served on the city council, active in the community. And, uh, most importantly, very interested in being on the Lester Library Board. So happy to recommend him as an addition who would come on May one.
Okay, um, looking for motion then.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jack Wallace to a three year term on the Lester Library Board.
Thank you. I'm second by Bonnie.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. So all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Here it is. Uh, unto G, consider appeal for variance from the city residency restrictions application to sex offenders per chapter nine dash nine of city ordinances.
Uh, yes, council's got the background information on this. The individual in question, uh, does not meet the provisions that allow for residency within the city by uh, a registered sex offender. Got the chief's memo where he reports on his department's feedback and recommendation that no waiver or variance of the residency restriction be applied. Uh, I do not believe the applicant or a representative of the applicant is here tonight. This letter did go out to him last Thursday. I think just in the interest of seeing if he wishes to be present or have council present, the council might, uh, table this to a future meeting and we'll, which next meeting will be on the thirty first. That not, meaning that any of the way of staff position on this changes, but, um, with notification by mail, not hearing anything back, I can't tell you for sure that he got us notice at this point of this meeting.
Okay. Uh, so then looking for motion then to either deny it or table it. Yes, Mark.
I'd motion we deny it.
Okay. We have a second? Thank you, Bonnie. Any council discussion?
Yes, Tim. I would think we should probably table it if we can't, we don't know for sure he got the notice.
Yeah, I just can't prove it, knowing how the mail operates. I don't know that voting it down would preclude the council considering an appeal if he affirms. Given the limited amount of time, it's my only reason for suggesting that.
Well, I'll mimic a wish then. There's a chance, I'll deny, suspension deny with amendment. Comes back, we reconsider allowing him to speak or something. That's definitely fair, but both of us are deciding tonight.
Make a question.
I guess. Second then? Oh, Bonnie, that's second. Do you pray for your life?
Yeah.
Are we giving him to like the next regular meeting, not work session, not just forever?
Any, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, uh, Andrew, but, uh, any, any feedback on this for our city attorney?
Well, so, uh, if I'm understanding what's happening correctly, we're looking at denying this, uh, but we're talking about tabling it now. Uh, i- if we denied it, it's denied, you know, you have the chance to, if you want to appeal it or whatever. That would be a good lack of denying it. Uh, tabling it allows us to take some time to make a decision. Um, providing you with more information if that's what's needed or or any of those other things, but, uh, does not force them into a position of of appealing and then moving on to another, uh, uh, body to make a decision.
If the council were to vote to deny tonight, the individual could be informed of that in writing and that if he if he wishes to appear for consideration of an appeal, that decision, he could could so notify the clerk. Is that a, that, so to that end, Mark's original proposal would be viable and it doesn't slam the door on appeal.
My original voting stand up and not a motion.
Because either way, he
He still
he still has to, we still have to inform the person if he wants to appeal it to council for a later meeting. It was scheduled for tonight. But we don't know if he got it, but
Okay.
Good. Bonnie, still okay with that? Any other council discussion?
Not that I'm really, sorry. Not that I'm in favor of saying yes to it, but I think I'm kind of with him at the same time. I just think it's fair for due process. I don't know that it'll change my mind. I can't say that, I don't think that it's going to. But for the individual not knowing if he got the letter to appear tonight and maybe he has some story that that half percent chance that it can change my mind or at least due process, I would, I'd rather table a person who's awful with them.
Is the Maribel address is registered? I almost, I don't know. The one that was mentioned?
That is what was on his application.
Okay. So there's a good chance he got it. Well, when did it go out, Thursday, a couple days ago? So Thursday. Oh, Thursday. I thought you said Saturday. Oh, I read that wrong. Okay, sorry. This letter was received. Okay, all right.
I'm hearing, again, from the attorney, a denial would rule out reconsideration upon request. By the same token, tabling it, I kind of suggest to a date certain. If that's two weeks out, the person would be duly notified with plenty of notice. It doesn't sound like either one, uh, outside the realm of what the ordinance allows.
We'll say that if we're unsure of notice, uh, it will, the the decision will stick a lot better if we're certain that it been notified. Whichever you say.
But it doesn't prevent him from coming back, you know that we're denying and still come back and appeal, right? So we're looking for chances.
It's on half of the, yes. It's it's kind of nuanced, but what's the first message? It's tabled for further consideration or it's denied and if you wish to appear, you still
What is the current motion for?
Is it for table?
Denied. It's a whole night denied. Denied. Right.
Yes, Bonnie.
I know this is a hard thing to do, but we have never said yes to those requests. When they request living here in this city and this guy has never lived in this city. Nor has he had any people in this city. I, I just, um, we usually go along as a police chief on this one. I I'm not trying to convince you it isn't that, but I've been here before when these, some of these offenders have come forth. It's a very difficult thing and I feel bad for them. Never. I don't know how to make somebody stop doing that. It's very difficult. Can I ask where he was gonna live? I mean
No, no, he's not.
Okay.
I think they're looking to move here, they're just looking
No, no, I didn't say on what side.
No, they're just, this intention is, they don't know.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Uh, so we roll call vote then, to deny. Amanda.
Mark Britner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Dan Petrie.
Aye.
Bobby Shumulus.
Aye.
Scott Sekman sir.
Aye.
Adam Humpy.
No, because I think he should get due process.
That's fair.
I understand based based on the discussion, the written notice go out to the applicant that the variance is denied by action of the council. But during discussion, council indicated unwillingness to hear any arguments that he or or council, because the legal counsel is referenced in the ordinance, would wish to offer. And, uh, encouraging that he wishes for that, to be in touch about arranging to do so. I'm I'm making this up at this point, but no later than say the April seventh regular meeting. Scheduled at quarter of month. And yes, but the council's action tonight was, that's just important.
Okay. Okay. Uh, unto H, twenty twenty-four annual W D N R MS four stormwater report.
I can label the spotlight sign.
Again. Um, each year, we have to submit a annual report to the D N R regarding our activities related to stormwater, uh, management goals. Uh, I put together a brief, uh, summary memo, uh, similar to what I have done in the past. But our permit pertains to public education outreach, public involvement participation, illicit discharge detection elimination, i.e. somebody dumping stuff into our storm sewer system. Uh, construction site pollution control, also known as erosion control, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention, how do we keep our own yard facilities, uh, free from discharging pollutants? Um, and then developing maps and fiscal responsibility. Uh, as I mentioned, I put this memo together back in twenty twenty-two when I came on board. Uh, and just listing out the various activities that we've done, uh, related to, uh, outfall inspection. We did have two illicit discharges, uh, that were referred up to us for inspection. One was found at F S Park, uh, at Oak Launch for, uh, unknown substance that was spilt. Uh, like, uh, something was dropped off with trailers right around the parking lot a little bit. Uh, we, the assistant fire department, looked at it, deemed that it could just be, tried to be absorbed with, uh, some sand and oil dry, to clean that up. The other was during, uh, a evening meeting, uh, somebody visited city hall and, uh, a gas can of diesel fuel, uh, spilled in the bed of their truck and ultimately flowed into the catch basins in the city hall parking lot. Uh, though, because it's a catch basin, uh, it had room for this liquid to be, uh, discharged into without actually being discharged further downstream in the storm sewer system and ultimately out into Eastwood River. Uh, so we were able to absorb it and not have it go down the sewer system. Uh, and then, uh, basically doing projects, uh, for erosion control and things of that nature. So, uh, the written portion of the report is also included after the, uh, memo. And then there's attachments as to, uh, backing up the documentation within the report. Uh, as far as, uh, discussions regarding erosion control and, uh, stormwater management practices, the biofilters that are being installed out in San Jose, et cetera. So those type of attachments are already attached to the rest of the report. It just becomes a thicker document. Um, and if you really want to see it for your viewing pleasure, just come on down and see it.
Matt, what's the status of our MS four permit? Is that every five years?
Usually every five years. I don't have a current date. Uh, actually, I think we're in the process of updating it this year.
I've been watching with interest how the modeling of the Flint River's water shed came out and what the implications are for nutrient management.
That would be the T M D L, which was passed last year.
Okay.
So, uh, but the MS four permit references the G I P M D L. Now that there's one in place, we actually have to meet those requirements over just something, our standards of that.
That says it relates to both rivers.
Both, both rivers plus, uh, forget me not, um, basically all the waterways within the city.
That would be directly, like, to
Uh, the, our permit does not yield the near shore waters of that Michigan. Uh, it starts at the harbor entrance and goes upstream and then in some cases, uh, it will be a ways up because the town to Rivers might enter a season.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a curiosity question. Um, the 134 tons of stuff the street sweeper picked up, does that just get taken to review or where did?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not using it as a reused product at this time.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we're looking for motion to authorize a public work structure to sign and submit to the W DNR.
I'll make the motion.
Pick it up, second by Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Go for that. On to Mr. Informational.
Uh, just a reminder, actually not listed here, but yet this week, you know, this meeting's council came up. The Personal and Finance Committee of City Council meets at 7:00 PM on Wednesday evening. That's with representatives of our auditor, CLA, to do a deeper dive on 2023 audit, their field audit team. They arrived today, yes, at city hall. They're starting, they just begun their work on the 2024 year-end audit this week. So that's Wednesday evening. Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, the city manager recruitment and selection committee will meet for probably a little over an hour. That'll be a teleconference, including Kevin Brumer from Public Administration Associates. And he'll be reporting back on responses from the community to the survey, responses from city council and staff. He'll have text announcement of the city manager position for recruitment and talk about his company's past work. They're doing things like assembling some, an online brochure, recruitment brochure, if you will, with some photos supporting the tourists. They'll also be doing the video. So that's open to all council members and the public. And that's 8:00 AM on Wednesday over at the house, I think in, in the COSCA room. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're right there. And then as noted here on the agenda, the city council work session meeting, this is five Monday months, so right now, next Monday's free unless you want to have a special meeting. The next meeting is on Monday, the 31st, 6:00 PM. Unless something weird happens, we'll be back at city hall with a functioning elevator. And just, just a reminder, because the vice ordinance, the city council reorganizational meeting, where newly elected or re-elected council members are sworn in and you elect a president, vice president, coming year, select seating assignments, draw proceeding assignments, generally approve a resolution as to order of business for regular meetings in the coming year. Again, by ordinance, that's to be held on the third Tuesday in April. This year's one of those unusual years where the third Tuesday in April does not follow the third Monday in April, April 1, the Tuesday. So what I'm trying to say not very well there is that the current council will continue to be in place through the April 7 council meeting. And then any changes on council will happen as of the reorganizational meeting on April 1. So that is that. The Personnel and Finance Committee has had several meetings of late reviewing the city's adopted goals for 2024, progress toward those goals. That ultimately also dovetails with the city manager's annual evaluation. They met at 5:00 here tonight in one of the conference rooms. They recessed to reconvene following this meeting. I think guys given the library closes at 8:00, will probably want to get that committee back together to adjourn for the. So if you see myself and at least the three members of the Personnel Committee, Personnel and Finance Committee, hurrying down the hall, that's, I expect to pretty much adjourn for the night. There is no closed session requested tonight. Phrase God.
Um, the city manager recruitment and selection committee meeting is in the bar inner room.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, no closed session, no meeting, so we're just looking for motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tim. Second by Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very. Thank you.